The agenda.
Yes.
Yep.
I remember.
Just going to the website.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the July 21st Town Council meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask Deputy Mayor Forrest to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor? Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to see everyone, fellow councilors and staff, some I haven't seen since the last meeting, which was over a month ago. It's nice to see all the friends in the public here. I'm gonna ask Sue to call the roll.
Mayor Lesser?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Here.
Counselor Bailey?
Here.
Counselor Carbone?
Here.
Counselor Clancy?
Here.
Counselor Durick?
Here.
Counselor Rhodes?
Here.
Counselor Timbrough?
Here.
Counselor Zambrello?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. We have two items under presentations, one which you'll see on your agenda, which I'm gonna get to first, which is proclamation for America 250, and then we have a special award with trophies, and I'm very excited to hear all about that in just a minute. But so, we just celebrated our country the 249th birthday, and now we're in the 250th year, and communities all across the United States are beginning to celebrate America's 250, and we already have a committee and folks in our tourism committee. Cindy, I don't know if that's the correct name, cultural and tourism? Is that? Something like that. We're close.
I told you, if you didn't ask me, but yeah.
Anyways, we have a proclamation tonight about America 250. I'm gonna read that, and then we'll go to our presentation that I'm so excited about as well. Proclamation of America 250. Whereas the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the formation of the United States of America will occur on July 4th, 2026. And whereas Weathersfield, founded in 1634, has contributed proudly and significantly to the history of our nation and our state for more than 391 years. And whereas in 2016, the United States Congress established by joint resolution the America 250 Commission to encourage the observance of the 250 years of our nation's existence. And whereas the governor established Connecticut's semi-quintennial, hopefully I said that right, semi-quintennial commission with Executive Order 22-02, and the commission has determined its mission and purpose is to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive celebration, commemoration, and observance of the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence through civic, cultural, and historic education events and program, programming. And whereas the commission will enhance tourism, economic development, history, civic education, historic preservation, and other recreation within the state. Now hereby be resolved that I, Mayor Ken Lesser, do hereby proclaim that Weathersfield will fully engage in commemorative activities leading up to and through July 4th, 2026. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand to cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be fixed this 21st day, July 2025. So, the planning has already begun, and we will, through July 4th, 2026, celebrate our unique place in America's history right here in Weathersfield. So, it's really nice for our town to be doing that, and there'll be a lot coming up. So now, it's my pleasure to introduce, and I don't know everyone's name, so I apologize, but I think you're gonna come up. Do I have the list of names? I do have everyone's name, okay. See? So, this is the Walk This May yearly four-town walking competition. And for those of you who don't know, Weathersfield won. Yeah. And it's gonna be presented by Ann Hartman, Assistant Director, Head of Community Health, and Betty Murphy, Health Education. So, I ask you guys to come up, say a few words, and we're excited to have won this competition. Thank you.
Scented for you.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Maybe you wanna use the mic, so everyone can hear you, and could also be picked up on those watching at home. Thanks, Ann.
Good evening, everyone. As Mayor Lesser just said, my name is Ann Hartman. I'm with the Central Connecticut Health District. I'm the Assistant Director and Head of Community Health, and Betty Murphy is our health educator, also in community health. And also, we have here with us our recovery coach, Karen Kylie, who is also a Weathersfield resident. So, what does it mean and what does it take to be a healthy community? That is something that the Health District thinks about on a regular basis and that we practice on a daily basis. And our mission focuses on two key aims, preventing illness and promoting wellness. And just sort of generally, preventing illness, our environmental health team inspects so many things, food trucks, restaurants, restaurants or food establishments that are within other businesses, like within schools or within nursing homes. They also do school cafeterias. They also ensure the safety of personal establishments, barber shops, salons, restaurant, uh, sorry, nail salons. They also follow up on lead poisoning cases that affect children under age three, which is, Weathersfield has in the past been an issue because Weathersfield is so old, so you have a lot of old homes with lead. Our community health team also prevents illness by doing annual flu clinics, which many of you participate in and we're thankful for. Our community health and clinical health teams also promote wellness. And that is another feature of our work. We have a Matter of Balance program, and that is to help people maintain their strength and prevent falls, which is a very important and reason why ambulances are called, in case y'all didn't know, fall assist, it's called. So, we also like to promote health through activity. And this is where the block grant, which supports this program, comes in. Some of you may have heard of it before. Some of you are on the bike ped committees that we see. Through the block grant, we have been able to support the purchasing of a bike counter, bike repair station, the bollards that you may have seen that were sort of protecting the road, some of those. We've also been able to secure funding for bike racks, and we're working with your town right now to secure some things this year. That same block grant also promotes the Walk This May program. So, through many, many groups, past and present, town engineers, town planners, and people who have worked on the Walk This May competition, we have been able to promote walking. Your town is fabulous in terms of being able to have people walk. You have sidewalks, you have bike paths, you have walking paths. That is excellent. And through the policies, like the Complete Streets policy, you have been promoting it along with all the people that I just mentioned. It's very encouraging for the Health District to have a town that has those features. So, through these two and their predecessors, they are part of the Steering Committee. So, the Walk This May Steering Committee is made up of members from all four towns, and they help promote the program. They set up walks in your communities. They help improve it. We do a lot of troubleshooting during the month of May when people are having issues, and they generally help guide Betty and I in how we run this program. So, this year, we had a two-award year for Weathersfield. So, there's two awards that this Walk This May competition has. One is the Impact Award, and the other is the High Stepper Award. And the Impact Award goes to the town that has the most number of people participating. This is the third year that Weathersfield has won that award. So, congratulations. Your team helped promote it very well. Can you guys come up here, Garrett? So, Garrett Sampson and Marlene DeJardin, and I would like that last name in my next life. Up the garden, it's the most beautiful last name. So, they helped to promote this in your town and helped to get the most number of people signed up. And then, we also have the High Stepper Award. This trophy will live with you, like it or not.
Size 14 sneaker.
I love that. That's great.
Until next year, when the next competition comes. And Weathersfield won this with 23,006,085,630 steps, which is the equivalent of over 10,500 miles.
Yeah, we should clap for that.
Which is incredible.
That is more than a third of the way around the equator of the earth, just people here in Weathersfield. And I don't bother counting how many calories this is because that is equivalent of, because this is really about just overall fitness and the ease with which we can move and help ourselves to improve our mental health, our physical health. And so, kudos to you all. I would love to invite the mayor and the town manager over so that Marlene and Garrett can present these trophies to you, and we can get it for posterity's sake. Is that all right? Where do you wanna go? Right here? Right in front?
I think we'll go in front. We can get the council.
They can get everybody.
Someone can capture this photo as well.
Oh, the shirt.
Congratulations for the multi, multi, multi steps.
You gotta find the place for it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all the work you do.
This is the good stuff. I'm gonna go back so I can get all the town council. Maybe you can all put a few thumbs up.
Shall we stand?
No one's doing it. Man, got it. That's okay, it's okay. Keep not getting it.
You're so silly.
Keep going.
That's good. All right. That's good. Thank you so much.
Ann and Betty, Garrett, Marlene, everyone, thank you so, thank you so much for all the hard work. We are proud to win this award, and we hope it stays in Weathersfield for a long, long time. But in all seriousness, preventing illness, promoting wellness, that's what we wanna do as a community. And with all of you guys helping lead that effort, it leads to all of us living healthier lives. And one of the best ways to lead a healthier life is to walk more. So, thank you for, thank you for encouraging that. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. It helps our whole town live better. So, thank you. We're gonna move on. Let's see where we are. We don't have any hearings tonight, so we're under public comment now. Let me just read the introduction. I read, during the public comment period, members of the public will have five minutes to speak on any issue. We have a lighted timer at the podium to help each speaker be aware of the time remaining for them to address the council. When you step up to the podium, please state your name and address, and at this point, the green light will come on showing your five minutes has begun. The yellow light will come on when you have one minute left. At this time, we ask you to please begin to wrap up your comments. The red light will come on when you reach the five-minute limit, and you'll be asked to complete your comments. Please do not speak, excuse me, if you don't regularly speak during public comment, please fill out the form at the podium with your name and address prior to returning your seats, so the information will appear accurately in the minutes. I ask that you address your comments to the entire council and refrain from speaking directly about an individual council member or the audience. And please be respectful and do not use derogatory comments or personal attacks. This section is for public comment, and the council will generally not engage in dialogue during this portion of the agenda. If follow-up is needed, please leave your contact information with the town clerk or the manager. And now, I invite you, just please name it. Yes, ma'am, you're already here. Name and address, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Dee Garcia, Sherburne Road. Weathersfield is a middle-class town, and the middle class in Connecticut is struggling. Connecticut residents, including Weathersfield's middle class, are now paying extra for those who didn't pay their electric bills. Number two, the rising cost of food purchases is hurting the middle class. We all know what happened to the price of a dozen of eggs, and eggs are a basic food item. Connecticut Food Share just reported there is 11% increase of people using a food pantry in Connecticut since last year. Many more middle-class families are now coming to the food pantries. For their health insurance premium, middle-class families now pay an average of $2,000 monthly. Due to our continuing rising everyday living costs, 25% of the U.S. population are using buy-now, pay-later loans for everyday living expenses. That is 14% higher than last year. According to a recent survey, almost 70% of the U.S. population are now feeling anxiety and depression because of their continuing rising finances, living expenses. According to the latest Prime America U.S. Middle Income Financial Security Monitor, most middle-income Americans believe their income has not kept pace with rising expenses. Last Wednesday, in this room, six Weathersfield households came very close to losing their homes permanently due to failure to pay their property taxes. Weathersfield's middle class is being hit not only with increasing everyday living costs, just cited, but also with Weathersfield's continuing rising property taxes, year after year. I wanna repeat this again. Weathersfield's continually rising property taxes. I am here tonight because I'm concerned about the future well-being of our Weathersfield's middle-class residents, and certainly also our elderly residents who live on a fixed income. I wanna share with you a true human story with you tonight. Recently, a retired widow, age 70, told me that he and his wife used to pay $6,000 in property taxes, but soon, his property taxes increased to $12,000 annually. Unfortunately, after his wife passed, he decided he could not afford living in his house alone, paying these excessive property taxes. He now lives in an apartment, but carries a picture of his beloved house. He blames the town politicians and the town's Board of Education for doing all it can to increase his taxes to a point where he could no longer live alone in the house he loved. I feel this story, a true story, is happening over and over again in Weathersfield, not only for the elderly, but for many middle-class residents. Recently, I visited the elementary school I attended in Hartford County. It was built in 1950 and is currently getting an addition, but is still being used. There are absolutely no plans to destroy it or replace it with a new school. But Weathersfield plans to destroy High Crest School in Phase Two. I don't understand why. I don't think the school board advisory committee, the Board of Education, the town council, the mayor, and the town manager researched the impact of our current inflationary expenses on the middle class and elderly in Weathersfield. For if they did, they never would have ever considered a proposed bond referendum of $238 million on September 16th, 2025. And then, another bond referendum for the school projects is being scheduled in three years or less. And if these bonds pass, this may be like a nail in the coffin to the middle class and the elderly in Weathersfield. What are you up to, I ask? This is crazy. And this bond referendum was planned right after a significant tax increase this year, based on the first year of our new property assessment. This year is the first year of four years of graduated increases in our property assessment. Every year for the next four years, all Weathersfield taxpayers will be paying taxes based on the annual increases in their assessment. The tax insert paper that was included in residents' July tax bills did not clearly, clearly explain this to the taxpayer, taxpayers. I ask you all, why wasn't this explained in detail?
Lee, I'm gonna ask you to summarize, please. I'm gonna ask you, your time is up. I'm gonna ask you.
Okay, I just have one more thing to say, please. Okay. What I wanna say here is that the student population is stable in Weathersfield. We do not need to have a new and expanded High Crest School. And I've talked to you about all the issues of the middle class in town.
Thank you, Dee. Thank you.
And I'm just requesting you here tonight to take another vote and to cancel this bond referendum scheduled for September 16th.
Thank you, Dee. Thank you. Who's next? Public comment? Anyone? Chris?
Chris Murtha, Six Churchill Road. I am here tonight to ask the council to review and potentially amend Town Code Section 139.1. This is essentially the sidewalk repair ordinance within the town. Having recently been surprised by a sudden obligation to pay for public property and maintenance, I'm not happy right now. But in short, in looking at, you know, it's, I consider to be an unfair, inequitable burden placed on select town payers, taxpayers, homeowners, for the public good, simply because our property has a sidewalk in front of it. Now, I'm working with the engineering department, and they're reviewing it, so I wanna put that aside. This is more out of principle that I think the council should take a look at this particular ordinance. But again, in essence, homeowners are obligated to maintain and repair public property, but don't receive any financial support or relief in the form of taxes, subsidy, in any way, shape, or form. It is not a shared expense. We're maintaining, for every one of you who may have a sidewalk, this is a burden that may be waiting for you. Now, realize this is a potential expense, so kinda dovetails on some of the, you know, no one ever likes, you know, their taxes increasing due to an expense. But nevertheless, this is still, this is still, should be considered an undue burden as a public property to be maintained by private homeowners. I realize that the Connecticut State Statute 13A149 basically indicates that municipalities have the primary responsibility for maintaining public sidewalks. However, they created a clause that allows them to shift, to allow towns to shift that burden onto the taxpayers. And roughly about 38% of the towns have chosen to do that. I'm not an attorney, just did a little research on the internet. There was the Office of Legislative Research in 2002, summarized that the law does not appear to allow municipalities to order property owners to repair at their own expense defective sidewalks abutting their property. But again, it gives municipalities the option of still passing on that burden to taxpayers. Again, so this deals with, you know, we're already shoveling during the winters, maintaining the property, maintaining sidewalks, not even being given the opportunity to patch the sidewalks. A full, the ordinance requires a full slab to be replaced. Costs us $320 per slab, in case you don't know. So, when you get hit with suddenly, oh, 10 slabs have cracks in them, which on my, you know, non-contractor, I figure 100 bucks of cement at Home Depot, and we're good. That's not an option. So now, I have a bill for over $3,200 out of nowhere that is for the public good, yet I'm responsible for it. So again, I simply ask that the council review specifically this ordinance. And, you know, if it is going to be a shared responsibility, share it. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. And we do plan to review that ordinance. Thank you. Further public comment tonight? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. At your May 19th, 2025 Town Council meeting, you had a discussion, long discussion, regarding the Emerson Williams School playscape. And in listening to all of that, taking notes on that, I went back and tried to research it, and of course, the town manager has removed the minutes for the last so many years, going back. Only has a year and a half on there, roughly. Everything else beyond that is gone for now. Won't be returning for two or four months, from what was said. Now, I contacted Ms. Schroeder and asked her if she could provide this information to me. She sat in the same meeting as I sat in and listened to the comments from your Director of Parks and Recreation. Your Director of Parks and Recreation was talking about that playscape was replaced in 2016. Ms. Schroeder also recognized that too and dug up the information for me on the playscape that was installed in 2016. Well, it turns out, I wrote a letter to the editor about this, and I got some flack back from Ms., ooh, Mattitell. Ms. Mattitell was the PTO person back at that time, in 2016, who did purchase through her PTO a new playscape. But it wasn't the same playscape. And she had absolutely no idea of, there was two playscapes. One is on the west side of Emerson Williams property, and the other is on the west side. The one that you had before you that night on the 19th of May was for pouring the floor with some kind of a soft material. And hers had mulch. Yet, if you were standing at one of these sites, you couldn't see the other. So you, unless you walked across, and in today's world, we don't walk across school properties because the police would come in and the SWAT team, and everybody else would come in, and you'd end up in jail just because of the life, the kind of way life is today. But the fact is, it was reported wrong that night. And Ms. Mattitell claims that's not hers on the west side, the east side of the Emerson Williams property. Hers was up on the west side, which you couldn't see. And it was a smaller unit. But the fact remains, we should not have people up here who don't know what they're talking about, especially a director. A director comes up here and is talking about 2016. Well, does anybody up here know when the one on the east side was installed? Nobody knows. It's a big mystery to this town. And the fact is, that you should have put mulch on that. You should remove that soft material and put mulch on every year, which would be a heck of a lot cheaper. And if you go and look at the destruction of the water that went across it, and the kids playing on it, it doesn't hold up. Yet, you voted that night to put the same crap back on the same piece of property, the same garbage, because it won't last. Then, days after all of this, the town was in there doing some work, earthwork. I don't know what they were doing, but obviously, they were doing something to divert water away from the east side playscape. The east side playscape, you voted for $38,900 to have the contractor fix not only the water issues, but also the flooring. water issues, but also the flooring. And here your town was in there doing the work. And that's quite questionable. But it's very, very bad because I don't think you people know what you voted for. And it's obvious that you didn't know. So, and granted, if you go back and look at the paperwork in 2016 and you go look at the paperwork in...
Thank you, Mr. Young, your time is up.
...May 19 of 2025, it talks about 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further public comment tonight? Mr. Woodward, and then Scott, you're on deck. Bob?
Thank you, Bob Woodward, 456 Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield. I'll pick up on the first speaker for a few moments. I'd like to see you still have time to change the voting date from September 16th to November 4th. Save us $20,000. It may not seem like much, but listening to the first speaker, she has indeed covered what a lot of us feel in this town and a lot of us experience, whether it's with grocery bills or medical bills or whatever. And here you're gonna go out and waste $20,000 for seven weeks. The Millwoods Park vote needed to happen because there wasn't another vote for 11 months. I suspect, I think Martha Caneely at the last meeting stood up and said the high school referendum was not on an election day. That may or may not be, I can't remember. But if it wasn't, it's possible it was at a time when, again, we had several months to wait for another election. Seven weeks, you still have time to change that. Please do. And please, when the next referendum comes up, assuming this school vote wins, when the next one comes up, please schedule it after 2029 when the next revaluation is due to hit, because this year has been hard enough for many of us. I understood it because some people sat down with me and helped me understand it, and I've got an undergraduate degree in mathematics. But a lot of people didn't, and they were confused by it. And let's just get through a referendum, a revaluation in 2029 and put the referendum off for the schools, the second one, until after that. Thank you for those two. The last thing I want to talk about relates to sidewalks, but it's not repair of sidewalks. I had a neighbor call me a couple of weeks ago. "Bob, there's something on the town website about signs." And I don't think I found what she found, but apparently, signs cannot go out in the area between the sidewalk and the street, which I always thought was a right of way based on when I bought my house and what I learned from the deed. The town, the signs can be taken, and I know they get out there lots of signs, graduation signs, birthday signs, worker signs, political signs. I was gonna make a suggestion on this. Before you go and take a lot of signs, maybe it would be nice, given the amount of taxes that most of us pay, have the town for a while, take the signs, put them at the front door, put a sticky note on them and say, "We're putting this back, you can put it elsewhere in your yard, but the next time it's out between the sidewalk and the street, we'll have to take it." That might be a little, a little better. And it would be appreciated by myself and others, I think. Thank you for listening tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Further, Scott, I think you're next, public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Scott Wans, 4 Avalon Place. I just want to clarify and read the language from the resolution. And while the cost of the school referendum will be $239 million, the taxpayers of Weathersfield will not need to pay that cost, thanks to the great reimbursement rate that our state representatives and senators have accrued for us, which is over 70% of the cost. So the referendum language notes, and will be there for all on September 16th, that we are authorizing an amount not to exceed $88 million to finance the appropriation. So essentially, for the cost of one school, we'll be able to get three repaired or new schools. And as the mayor said, the date for September 16th is important. This is an important issue for the town. It's one that we have been hearing comments about for some time. It deserves a day of its own to be decided about and not to be mixed in with municipal elections and charter revision recommendations as well. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Tim Garcia, Sherwin Road. We have a referendum coming up on special September date, and few residents really know about it. The text of the question is not available yet. Various newspapers' articles have cited price tags in excess of $200 million with unclear breakdown between the town and the state's share of this exorbitant cost. And what is the next phase? Does the text of this ballot question make it clear there will be a follow-up referendum for further expenditures to complete this massive boondoggle? Now, Councilor Retsz has said to study the facts of this project, but where can we find these facts? So far, the town website and the library don't have the information. The explanations published in The Rare Reminder have been sketchy and incomplete. Does the town council want an informed citizenry to vote on this project on its merits? Or do they want its proponents, a small percentage of the town, to vote on it while everyone else is kept in the dark? Given the non-standard voting date and the lack of public notification of this late date, it appears to me that the town hopes that the citizens stay home on September 16th. Fortunately, citizens are paying attention anyway, not necessarily to this issue, but to their property tax revaluation, to the public benefit on their electric bills, to the levy on their Chevy. The town is trying to sneak this referendum through, but I believe the citizens have a chance to vote for lower taxes and against unnecessary exorbitant spending. They will choose to vote no. The town has chosen not to inform the public, so the public has every right and responsibility to reject this ill-defined proposal.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Further public comment this evening? Anyone else from the public? Yeah, I see Christine and Steve. You're gonna let your daughter go first, right? Daughter goes first.
Christine Kelly, LaSella, 37 Belmont Street in Weathersfield. I wasn't gonna come up, and then it keeps gnawing at me. I didn't find the agenda until this morning online, and I guess so I have just more of a question. Looking at appointments for the Historic District Commission, I'm seeing a couple of new names. And then there's a reappointment of an alternate who's been on HDC for a while. I had a neighbor ask me, you know, "Oh, how do you get on HDC committee?" So I said, "Well, I guess you go to the town clerk's office or town hall, go to the town manager." She's a lifelong resident of the town. I think she's 32 years old. She has a degree. Her college degree was a major in art history. And her thesis was a 76-page, which is actually published on Amazon, on old Weathersfield architecture. And so when I was reading this, I was like, "Oh, this is awesome, I'll find her name." And she's not on here. I didn't have the opportunity to speak to her directly, but she didn't hear back from anybody. And I guess my question is, like, you guys have this on a consent agenda, and I know you can't answer me right now, but who decides who gets on these committees? And do you guys actually, guys and ladies, actually read resumes and see people's qualifications? And this is in no disregard to an individual that's on here, but I, he kind of just moved to town a few months ago, because he lives right around the corner from me. And I don't, I'm not saying he's better or worse, or she's better or worse, but I'm just curious, is it politically motivated for these boards and commissions? And I feel like the Historic District, even Park and Rec, Planning and Zoning, I don't think it should be political. And maybe it is, because, and you guys know I don't like politics, but I'm just interested in the process. And then I'm hopeful, and I think this young lady, you're gonna hear from her, because she didn't even get a no thank you. And I know there's somebody on here who's on a few other commissions or boards, and she's qualified to be on HDC. That's just my opinion. But I think if many of you had read her resume, she might have gotten a phone call. So I guess that was, that's my question. Just because I'm a stickler for facts, and somebody had mentioned the Millwoods referendum, unfortunately, that was not done during a regular election, because there wasn't one, and we were 11 months away from one. That did cost $8,317.08, because it was only held at the community center. And I do believe that the 2022 referendum was held during an election. It was that question about the school referendum that didn't fail. And the question about early voting was also on that, and I believe it was on Election Day. Not that that really has any bearing, but just FYI. So yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you. Steve?
Steve Kelly, 29 Old Smithy Lane. I got two sayings in mind for you. The end doesn't justify the means, and the one that I've used before, you're here to represent us, not to rule us. With that in mind, I never saw a sense of urgency after the first referendum went down that we would, you know, get, move on to the next one. And then I recall reading in The Rare Reminder, which is the only paper, I guess, that reports on town news, about how somebody, not your body, but I guess the building committee had hired someone to help them to get a referendum passed, to show how to do that. And that sort of bothered me that you're doing that anyway. But during the previous deliberations about this referendum, I remember that the council spoke, Mr. Mayor, about, "We're gonna do it in June because there's an urgency to get to the state legislature, and they're gonna adjourn, you know, July 1, whatever. So that's why we're gonna do it in June." Then, we didn't have enough time to do it correctly, so now we're gonna do it in September. And then a miracle of all miracles happens, the legislative, you know, we got the commitment from, I don't know, our two representatives or Senator Lesser. I guess the only guy not taking credit was Senator Fonfarah. But they all said, "All right, we have this commitment," which is great. And so I don't see the urgency to hold the referendum in September. We could hold it, you know, because now it was brought to our attention, it has to be done by November 15th. Okay, that's fine. So it does bother me that we're wasting $20,000 to $30,000 when we could have been paying for a lot of sidewalks with that money or whatever else we need. The point of the matter is, every one of you voted for that resolution, which in this case is a good thing. And there is a precedent for this, but you'd have to go back like 50 years when an upstart councilman pulled this. Anybody on the prevailing side can introduce a resolution that's gonna be a little different of the same one. In our case, any one of you could make that resolution, somebody has to second it, now it goes to a public hearing. You could make that resolution to hold the referendum during the regular election. I don't think we should be trying to dissuade people from voting, and that's what a lot of people think everybody's doing. And, you know, we're not involved in national politics where, you know, one party's trying to keep it down, the other one's trying to get everybody to vote. You know, we should want the, and by the way, I'm for the referendum. I'm for all the schools getting done. But, you know, let everybody vote on it. I think it's just a bad precedent that we're trying to force-feed this one for some reason and not making it easier for everyone to vote. I know you can probably get an absentee ballot, but that's even worse. People are just gonna say, you know, "I wanna go." It's not that, it's not, with all apologies, Mr. Mayor, it's not that special that people couldn't concentrate on, "Well, I gotta vote for these six and these four, and oh yeah, I got the charter review thing, and I never even read it, but I'll vote for it." I think people can handle all these issues. I don't think it's that tough of a deal. And I just wish two of you would get together and somebody make the resolution, the other one second it, and let's just air it out. I think it would be a bad precedent to say that this is what we're gonna be doing. And one thing real quick, I really think it should be rewritten. As you know, you don't have to grab all the money all at once. I still have a fear that Hamner and Emerson Williams are gonna fall by the wayside, that that referendum would not get passed, and that would be a shame. I mean, Hamner's been ignored since the high school referendum. Somehow, we waited all these years to get to Hamner, when we beat down the swing school theory, all of a sudden now, Hamner, which was a horrible place, mold, mildew, everything else, all of a sudden, it's the last school getting done now.
Thank you, Steve. I'm gonna ask you just to wrap up your comments to five minutes.
That was it, that was my wrap.
Oh, that's, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Further, further public comment? Anyone else from the public? Yes, Dennis in the back.
Hi, folks. Dennis McMahon, 655 Highland Street. It's my wife's birthday, so I'm gonna be brief. I'm chief of service for WEMSA, the volunteer ambulance service that's proudly protected the people since 1956. Years ago, this council asked me to strengthen our service. I did. While we remain largely volunteer, I was honest then, as I am now. A fully volunteer model that once worked cannot survive in today's world, covering only nights and weekends. To meet today's needs, we began paying our riding members $21 an hour, barely above the minimum wage, hence the name change. It is not about the money for us. Since 2022, I've asked for the town's assistance to help us fix a prior unfair contract signed by a previous chief, which required us to pay, and more than $300,000 for paramedic service. The town paid nothing. I met with Mr. Presley and the mayor. I asked for a joint discussion with Etna and town officials. That never happened. Decisions were made without us. And it is also clear, if WEMSA stays open, they won't even provide mutual aid to Weathersfield. That's not healthcare. That's a course of business tactic. It's been said by many that East Windsor Ambulance would respond to 911 calls from East Windsor. That's simply false. That's designed to scare people. The real plan was for a merger of our two services with two paramedic ambulances based right here in Weathersfield, 24/7. Calling in anything else, frankly, is a blatant misrepresentation. During this time, a new EMS plan was written behind closed doors, without our input and against the town charter. Dispatch was directed to use Etna, even though WEMSA still holds the PSA. All we've ever asked for is a modest, reasonable support, a rent waiver at our building, a subsidy or a loan of a quarter million dollars, far less than what surrounding towns invest in EMS every year to help us become a paramedic-level service. We were first told that this was a fair request, but we were soon advised that it would be unreasonable to go from zero support to a subsidy of any kind. However, nearly $1 million was spent on lawyers and experts to replace us with the commercial ambulance service. I don't understand, why is Etna using public funds to support an out-of-town, for-profit corporation instead of helping to strengthen a trusted and loyal nonprofit dedicated solely to our town? Last year alone, WEMSA responded to over 1,300 emergency calls. We provided more than 12,000 hours of service. We covered all the town events, the football games, the races, the 5Ks, all for free. This year, we are now handling more than 80% of the 911 calls in town. We have highly-trained EMTs, fully-equipped ambulances, and a strong record of service. Meanwhile, Etna is half-owned by a company in bankruptcy that just a couple of weeks ago had to borrow $30 million to help make their payroll, and gonna need another $55 million more next month. Councilors, you still have a choice. Reopen the conversation, let's create... Reopen the conversation, let's create a fair, transparent EMS plan together. The alternative is simple. It's a growing monopoly, slower response times, families grieving when an ambulance sometimes has to battle traffic from Hartford to Glassonbury or Manchester, or wherever they're coming from, instead of coming right from our local town but a mile away. Etna will only commit to having one ambulance in town. When COVID hit, we did not back down, as Chief Bailey knows. It was a scary time. I rode call after call. We went into homes wearing full protective gear from head to toe, disinfected my uniforms, my boots, my equipment in my garage, before I went into my house with my family and my grandkids. And I showed up again for work the following day. My EMTs did the same. I got sick. Some of our other EMTs got sick. One was so sick that she could never return to service. But we kept going because Weathersfield needed us. And the residents stood by us as well, bringing us meals, coffee, thanking us. They have been loyal to us because we've been always loyal to them. Now I'm asking the town council to show that same loyalty. Let WEMSA continue to do what we've been doing faithfully since 1956. It's late, but it's not too late. Don't leave it up to the state. Withdraw the petition, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you. Happy birthday to your wife.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further, yes, ma'am. Yes. Yep, please. Name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Roberta Wood, and I live at 14 Midwell Road. Public speaking is not my forte here, so just bear with me.
Take good time.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. I'm here tonight, okay, as both a grieving pet owner and a deeply concerned resident of Weathersfield. On the evening of May 2, 2025, which should have been a peaceful walk through my neighborhood, turned into a nightmare. My beloved Basset Hound Molly was viciously attacked by a German Shepherd from a property at the corner of Wells Road in Maple Side. Despite rushing her to the emergency veterinary hospital, her injuries were so severe that we had to make the agonizing decision to let her go. It was the most traumatic moment of my life. What makes this even harder is knowing it was preventable. Molly was on a leash. She was just out for a walk. Now I not only live with the pain of losing her, but also with the devastation, devastating loss of safety, peace of mind, and trust in my own neighborhood. I am haunted by that night. I now feel anxious walking past unfamiliar dogs. The simple joy of a neighborhood stroll, something I once cherished, has been taken from me. I don't want what happened to me and Molly to happen to anyone else. I am urging the town of Weathersfield to take a closer look at how we address dangerous dogs before another tragedy occurs. We can make a real difference with clearer policies, stronger containment rules, and consistent enforcement of existing laws. I respectfully ask the town to consider the following. A clear and enforced dangerous dog policy, including official designation, tracking of aggressive and dangerous dogs, required corrective actions and containment protocols for owners, public notification when a dangerous dog is present in a residential area. I'd also like mandatory investigation notification following a serious dog-on-dog or dog-on-human attacks with clear procedures and public reporting mechanisms. Stricter containment requirements, such as reinforcement fencing and secured gates, warning signage at properties where dangerous dogs are housed. Consistent leash laws enforced, ensuring all dogs off property are safely leashed and under control at all times. And support for victims, including access to full animal control reports, clear options for resource or for filing complaints, and trauma, excuse me, trauma support resources, especially for children or elderly residents who may be at a heightened risk. I know that Weathersfield is a town that values community, safety, and responsibility. I believe we can and we must do more to protect all our residents, both humans and animals. Please help ensure that Molly's death was not in vain by taking action to prevent further tragedies. I thank you for your time, your service, and for listening to me. This is my legal representation.
Thank you, Roberta. I'm sorry about Molly. Sorry about your loss. Name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Attorney Darlene Wood. I do not live in Weathersfield. I am a legal attorney for Ms. Roberta Wood and for Molly.
And just again, for the, just for the record, your address, I understand you don't live in Weathersfield, but.
That is correct.
You can, what's that? Could be a business address, and we do need an address, though.
16 Silver Street, Auburn.
Auburn, Massachusetts.
Okay. Yep, please proceed. Go ahead. Thank you.
So why I'm here, obviously, you are well aware. I have brought this forth to both the town manager, Mr. Presley, if he's ever received that, and your police chief. You actually, under Chapter 70 of your bylaws, and your definition starting at Chapter 70-2, address exactly what we are looking at. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, it appears there is no animal control. However, under your definitions, animal control officer is defined as animal control officer and/or your designee, which is your police department and your responding officers. This incident follows your exact public nuisance law, which states that an animal that endangers the life or health of a person or other animals, or interferes with the rights of citizens other than their owner, to the enjoyment of life of their property. And under Connecticut law, Molly the dog is property. It also goes to your vicious and dangerous animal, which clearly states any animal that without provocation has bitten or attacked a human, or has imposed a threat of bodily harm. To have a dog ripped apart in front of you and be able to have three people there to pull them off, although at this instant, no one was bitten, that is still a threat. That also comes down to your administrative sanctions that are under Chapter 70-5, which allows for muzzling of a dog, obedience training of a dog, having proper fencing for a dog. This dog is behind an electric fence. In my 26 years of doing animal law and investigating dangerous dogs, electric fences are not allowed for the very simple reason that when power goes down, or if a line gets cut, it is not 24/7 that dog is contained. As in this instance, that dog blew right through that fence, and the power was on. Your sanctions also go forward to have that animal should be checked for the number that is in location, what animals are at that location, and if it rises to the level, euthanizing of that dog. This was an aggressive attack that was unprovoked, that was not necessary, and that unfortunately, from what I've been trying to find out, and it appears that the neighbors know, but I am not getting any records, this is not the first attack. This dog will attack again. The city or your town is now liable and has accountability to protect exactly what your job is, as gentleman Steve said. You represent these people. You represent that someone that is out walking as themselves, with their children, with their own pets, are not in a public safety issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, attorney. Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir. Yep, ma'am. And see you back there. Yes.
Hello, I'm Taya Tola, and my address is 59 Stonegate Drive in Weathersfield. So I am speaking on behalf of WEMSA, but I'm also speaking on behalf of me living in this town for most of my life. I was here a month ago to speak to the council on behalf of WEMSA after hearing of the decision from the Department of Public Health. I have been reading on the case. I know there's a lot of information out there online, so I am under, I am of understanding of what is going on and what was proposed and what was argued. I am also aware that Etna is not willing to sign with you guys if we still stay in service. I am coming here with open arms, with kind of an open ear as to kind of working out, pretty much working out a solution with the town to see if WEMSA can stay open still. I really love my job as an EMT. I'm a college student. I want to be a doctor when I grow up, and I'm working towards that. And I love talking about my job, and I do research within the field of EMS, advocating for first responders. And when I go to conferences within the state of Connecticut, at UConn, and outside Connecticut, and go to Maryland and Texas, and they're like, well, where do you work? And I say, I work in my hometown. Like, it's something so great that Weathersfield has so many of these things that we offer. And EMS is also a big community factor, too. Like, we do a lot of standbys for a lot of places, within schools, within sports events, within a lot of other things. And it's just unfortunate that we might be losing that piece. Although Etna does have its support, its big supports from like Hartford Hospital, and they have resources, they might not have the time to offer the community aspects that we do. And we get to know the people that we work for. Like, we know the streets that we drive on. We know the people that we serve. And sometimes I see patients that I've seen before again, and they're like, oh, well, you came to our house last week. And I already know everything, kind of what's going on, because I had that patient, you know? And I'm speaking at the depth of my heart here. Like, I understand that Etna does have some sources that the town can benefit from, but really, like, if we can combine those and make it better, if we can find a solution to where, you know, maybe we can have a paramedic service and get, really be an ALS unit with proper, like, ALS backup, too, and have, like, medication at the station and everything, like, let's work on it. Let's do something to make our town really great. And, you know, it's just going to be unfortunate if we do lose that community piece and not be able to serve our community as before, you know? If anything, as me being an EMT on the road and working with Etna, if anything, like, despite everything going on, us as EMTs and medics, we work together for our patients, you know? If they can't take something or they want to downgrade it, we're there to take it, and we work together. And that's how it should be. It shouldn't be about, okay, it's either one or the other. Like, why don't we combine that? Why don't we make it better? And there's so many people, so many young people that now work at WEMSA, too. There's a lot of changes that have happened, like I mentioned a month ago. And a lot of these people are very passionate and have done so much to make it such a better place. And we were really just at our takeoff, like, at our exponential growth of making something better because of great people that are here tonight that were working on it, and a bunch of young students that are also in college that want to be medical providers, too. So I'm just asking if you could give, if you could, you know, maybe open the door, give an opportunity to have a true conversation about this, and let's be, let's really be productive and think about our town and think about our people, you know? Because a lot of people, a lot of members in our town are upset about this. And yes, like, they'll benefit from Etna, but what about that community piece? What about really combining the best of both worlds to really serve our people? You know, it's just unfortunate that we are going to end up losing that, you know, and just having Etna being primarily here. A lot of other towns, like Newington has AMR, they work together. Rocky Hill also has Etna. Like, why can't we try to strengthen that and work on that as well? You know what I mean? So I'm under, I am of understanding of what's going on with the DPH and what's going on with everything, but let's try to work something to where we can all support each other and all have, like, the best services we can without having to cut WEMSA or having to pick one or the other and have this brawl, you know? So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank, thank you, Taya. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you, Taya. Further public comment at this time? I don't see any. I'm going to move on in the agenda. Okay, moving on. Council reports. Does anybody, any counselor have a report tonight? Counselors? No? No. Going to move on to the next item. Council comments. Does any counselor have a comment this evening? I'm going to, okay. Counselor Carbone, yes, please.
Thank you. Just to give a little bit of backstory, I know there were some issues with people trying to get the agenda. I did get the agenda late myself, but it had nothing to do with a tech issue. So I did try to set up a meeting, just as context, people know I'm not trying to shove something in quickly. I tried to reach out to Fred this morning to hold a meeting. For whatever reason, didn't hear back till this afternoon. But I did have the opportunity to clarify some questions with the town manager that I had. We have a very large consent agenda, and I'm sure that's, you know, provoked a lot of questions. A few things provoked questions for me, and I always say if I have questions, I'm sure people out there have questions as well. So I did ask the town manager during his comments if he would clarify a few points. One of them was on item J3 about the funding source for the Bike Path consultant. The second thing was, J7, thank you, I was getting there, oh, my gosh. All right. J7, J8. The funding almost looks like you're getting, you're getting hit twice for $4.95, and apparently that's not the case, but he can go into more detail with that. So I appreciate that. You know, some of our, it's interesting how sometimes we're all on the same page as, and I know it concerns me, that concerns me, it always astonishes me when I hear people talk sometimes, and they say the same things I'm thinking. So there's a few things I really wasn't going to bring up, but I want to thank one of our residents for bringing it up. We had talked before about the $20,000 for the referendum in September. And during that conversation, and I don't know if it's in the minutes, I'd have to go back and look, we actually did maybe discuss trying to bring the cost down, maybe potentially doing it in one location. And then I think it kind of got dropped. So maybe that is something that we can, as a council, bring up again. Because I know this is an issue for a lot of people, and I don't think it has to be. So if that's something you guys would let be open to discuss before it gets irreversible, that might be something we could do. So thank you for bringing that up, because I think it's important. Another thing that also came to light was the HDC appointments. And I know this is not a question and answer, but there is a screen, each political party has a screening committee that reviews any of the appointments. And, you know, questions are asked, resumes are reviewed, and then those people are put forth by that political party for, to get voted on by the council. And there is something, and please, maybe you could help me out, the name of it, when the majority party has a limit, there has to be minority representation. So we're only allowed a certain amount of people. So I always tell, be careful who you vote for, right? Because those people can appoint everybody on boards and commissions, and it would, it will be more reflective of the party that's in power. So that's just a given with that. But I did have a question with the HDC, and maybe the town manager can, in his comments, also talk about that. And I mentioned this to you before, about typically, when we appoint HDC members, they go through the alternate position for a year to gain experience and to understand what's asked of them, because it's a very intense position. We have one of the largest historic districts in the country. So we have a great designation, so to have that, it's not that people don't bring skills to the table, but also they just don't have experience in that position. So I noticed that a person was being moved into a regular position, not alternate, and I was just curious as to if you knew why that was happening, or if that's a practice that is just specific up to the party. And I think that's about it. So thank you. I yield to you.
Thank you, Counselor Carbone, for raising those issues. Other council comments? You want to, I have a few. Counselor Zambro, were you going to, or no?
I can answer the last question, but.
Counselor Zambro, if you would bring your mic down, if you're going to.
I'm just trying to figure out, because I know there were some questions for Fred, and I could respond to your last question, but I don't know if Fred wants to do that, so I just want to make sure it gets an answer.
I'll add two if you want.
Okay, okay. So for the appointment question that you mentioned, sometimes it just, so first of all, it's actually not typical for appointees to this commission, or really any commission, to be starting in an alternate role. Anybody who is qualified for the commission is qualified, in theory, for any role within that commission. They all are able to participate equally in the meetings. The only difference is how likely they are to vote, depending on the attendance. So that part is not how it's typically done, and it really often comes down to where the openings are. And, for example, one of the openings that the Dems had tonight was a regular position, because that's where there was a resignation. And then there were alternate spots. One person with their term coming up for reappointment was an R, so he was, he's being reappointed. And then there was a U spot. So I think the person mentioned earlier was a registered Democrat, so they were only interviewing U's for that spot, because that's what the current party affiliation was. So it's not always a Dem-Republican exact split. It was a Dem appointment, but for a U, so. So there are some restrictions on who can appoint who. So sometimes it just doesn't work out that smoothly. And that's really, that's really all I can say, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zambrell. Further council comments? I have a few, and it's mainly about events that happened since our last council meeting, which was June 16th, and events that will be coming up in town before our next council meeting, which is August 18th. On June 17th, the night after our last council meeting, and many of you are aware of this, but it's worth repeating, we had the T-ball field dedication for Judy and Richard Keen, and was very well attended and a well-deserved honor to name that T-ball field after Judy and Dick have done so much for our kids. On June 24th, we had the first responders' mural dedication ceremony at Pittkin. I think most of our residents have been able to go and see that beautiful mural honoring firefighter Robert Charkevus and police officer Bobby Garten. But it is beautiful, and we had a wonderful dedication ceremony honoring them and our first responders. This past Saturday, just two days ago, we had the first annual Weathersfield book walk. We had about 50 authors. It was a lovely event in old Weathersfield. And my understanding is we are going to have a poet laureate next year from Weathersfield. It's a, I guess, a competition. But it was very well-attended and a nice event for our town, and I hope it becomes an annual event. This was the first one. A few things coming up. This weekend is the teen theater production of The Sound of Music. Someone, correct me if I can get this wrong, but I believe it's Thursday night, Friday night, and two performances on Saturday. I don't believe there's one on Sunday. And I did see, you'll find this interesting, everyone, town manager, Kathy Bagley, who most of you remember was our director, Parks Director, putting signs in around town as I was driving around. I know this was one of her loves, to be involved with the teen theater. And I saw her putting, putting signs in around town. But I hope residents get to see that also this weekend. I have two more. The, on Friday night, the Webb Dean Stevens Museum has an event, a bluegrass performance by their, his name is Peter Winnie. He works for Webb Dean Stevens as their gardener, and I heard him last year at the same event last summer. It's a fabulous event, great, a great performing band. I think it's Audrey May, but he's the lead, a tremendous performer. And it's a local event. If you're around Friday night, check that out. And the last one I'll mention is coming up on August 5th, and that is National Night Out, sponsored by our police department. It's open to the public. I know many counselors have gone many times, as I've gone many times. It's a great night. Our police department does a wonderful job. Well, they always do a wonderful job throughout the year, but a wonderful job hosting this event. And I hope many residents can go, and I hope many counselors can go. That's all I have for council comments. Does anybody have anything before we leave council comments? Okay, moving around to the town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll address Counselor Carbone's questions earlier about the agenda. First, the agenda itself and access to the agenda. There was an issue with our provider, Granicus, with respect to the access on that. It was posted on Thursday afternoon, like we always do. It was posted outside the clerk's office as well. And it was up there. It was up there Friday, because I went up and pulled it down myself from the website. And then at some point after that, it was not. And when we realized it, we had a few people call on Monday morning saying, you know, what's going on? And we immediately reposted it. And we are still waiting on Granicus to give us an explanation of what occurred. One of the things we did find out is when we tried to print these, for you all, those that have it printed, it wouldn't print. The document, even if it was as it was loaded. So IT determined that there was, there was a, I guess, an error in the PDF that prevented it from printing, and we think that might have had something to do with it coming off their website. But we still haven't figured that out yet. But if anyone ever has any issue getting the agenda, just reach out to my office, and we will absolutely get it for you. And it's always posted outside the clerk's office. With respect to the specific items Counselor Carbone brought up earlier, item under the consent agenda, item J3, this is for the bike and pedestrian master plan. There was an error in, Counselor Carbone picked up on, that was on the agenda sheet for that item. And so under the description, it correctly states that $80,000 from the state Urban Act grant funds will be used for this project. But then, under budget source amount, it listed a grant for, from Connecticut D for rec trails, which was not correct. That was from a previous project. So it should be the 80,000 from the Urban Act funds. And those funds, for those of you that are familiar with that grant, we received a $4 million Urban Act grant from the state. 1.7 million of that is being used for the renovation in the library. 1.2 million was used for the Millwoods projects, and there's several that were approved. And we'll have another item on that shortly. And then there was an amount that was left that was used for transportation-related projects. And this is one of those projects that we're using for those funds. For item J7 and 8, these are together, it's the same project. 7 is just to reallocate some of those that I just mentioned, the Urban Act grant funds that were dedicated to Millwoods, in order to fully cover the item for 8, which is the Little League, the classic Little League field. It's for the drainage repair work and basically redoing the field, replacing all the fences and the backstops, okay, as part of this project. And the bids came in on that. And it was, we had 220,000 that was allocated to that project and additional 25,000 that was in, previously in CIP reserve for that project. So we needed additional funds. So we're asking you to reallocate $245,000 of those Urban Act funds that were dedicated to Millwoods. And those are coming out of two projects, essentially. One of those, and I have to go back to my notes, is for the, the upper fields, for the softball and the soccer fields. We had planned to do drainage work up there. But in the last year and a half or so, we've been working on the new Millwoods master plan, and that area is proposed for some other potential uses, other potential fields, moving around the fields to accommodate more fields. And with that as a possibility, we felt it was prudent to hold off on doing the drainage work there until we know what actually is going to be in that location. And then 28,000 was previously allocated for planting of additional trees at Millwoods. And as the council here, I'm sure remembers, you all allocated $40,000 of ARPA funds for, specifically for trees, that we had purchased, that we will be able to utilize over the next three years for across town. And there's also, because of the work we've been doing with our tree warden, we've been able to secure additional grants. We believe we'll be able to get even more grants for these trees once we figure out where everything's going at Millwoods. And again, it's more of a timing thing than anything else. So those are the two sources of that money. And that was a clarification. I believe those are the three items.
Yes. No, essentially, J7 is reallocating all those funds into the sum, and then J8 is actually choosing the person to do it.
It's awarding the contract, and the entire project is $495,000. It's not both of those. I also want to mention, I think there was a question regarding the HDC appointments. And again, it's, it is, I've been in places where it's not uncommon for people on certain boards and commissions would have to be an alternate first for a certain period of time, and then they would be promoted. But that has not been the case here, and it has not been the case in certain other towns I've been in. It's really different how it's done. There is no policy saying that someone must be an alternate first. It's just the way it's done. And it's, again, assuming, again, actually, I think she did a good job saying that, you know, their resumes are vetted, and that's not within our purview. But it's certainly not with that, outside of the policy. The only thing I'd like to mention is that we did the town, I mentioned this in my report that went out in the newsletter, but we were approved by DOT for the Automatic Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices. Our plan was approved. It was a long process, it was a lot of back and forth. But we are approved for both stoplight and speed cameras in several different locations around town. We are soliciting proposals right now from firms. We're utilizing the bid that CROG had put out. They had pre-qualified a number of firms, and we're asking them to basically give us a plan for implementing our plan, and then we'll shortlist that. And hopefully, the plan is to have a proposed contract in front of you for the next meeting in August.
Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Again, thank you, Counselor Carbone, for raising those issues. And I'm just going to make a quick comment on the last item that he mentioned, which is these red light and speed cameras. We are the fifth town in the state to be approved. Early in this term, we passed unanimously red light and speed cameras, as the town management's a long process. We all need to drive safer. We need to change driver behavior. But soon, we will be looking at the bids, and we will be getting cameras, red light cameras and speed cameras in town, because it is a serious issue in Weathersfield, in Connecticut, and across the country of reckless driving. And we, we are doing it. We, it's just been a long process, and we're the fifth in the state to get approved, and we are approved now. So thank you, Mr. Town Manager. We will now move on in our agenda. We have no bids to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. I move the consent agenda, and I have a quick question for the town manager after.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded questions. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. To the town manager, on your recent explanation regarding 3, J3, do we need to have any type of discussion or amendment to make sure that we are appropriately allocating the appropriate funds? If it was in a previous agenda, this particular motion authorizes you to do it, but it doesn't exactly say the funds. And if there was a possibility for ambiguity, I'd at least like to fix it, right?
No, the funds have already been allocated for, this falls within the purview of the funds as they've been allocated. So we don't have, we don't need a separate motion or an amended motion. Basically, we're just asking you to award the contract.
And then how about the conversation about how there was two sources of the funding? How is that being resolved?
It's, we will amend the record to accurately reflect what it was, but it is accurately stated in the record. It's just, it's also an incorrect under budget source amount. It's incorrectly listed, but it is not part of your motion. It was more explanatory. And so just clarifying the record there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions on the motion? We have a motion on the table. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes, thank you. Moving on, we do not have any approval of ordinance and resolutions. Item L, unfinished business, L1 Capital Reserve Fund Projects, the old ARPA funds. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, we're just bringing this back to you all. You know, this has been before the council a number of times now. We did provide you with an updated list with respect to the funds remaining and what's been spent to date. Those provided by the finance director. Currently, there's about just 1.281 million dollars remaining that has not been allocated, and you have the ability to allocate those for any related projects. I did provide you, again, with some of the things that we have requested, namely, the safety issues with respect to our town buildings. You have the quote from February also at your, at your location. I provided you with updated quotes that came in today for a scaled-down version of that ask, and that's for exterior doors only on this building and the community center, and additional cameras on those two buildings, as well as the upgrade necessary for the police department's system, which they have in place. But they have to get that system upgraded. That bid actually came in, came in $20,000 less than the February bid, interestingly. So those numbers for you to consider, we've also provided you with. You know, we've been working on the quotes for the community center. You saw that we had the proposal for the full rebuild, which is obviously not something we can do with this funding. But for the banquet room itself, those quotes also came in. Everything's coming in really high. It's a conversation I had with Counselor Carbone earlier. So this is just for the banquet room, and that's for the HVAC and the upgrade for all of the, the technology in the room and, you know, the facelift as well. And it came in at over $3.5 million. So we could phase in parts of that if that's something you want to do. We just, more than anything, wanted to provide this to you all, so you have that information. We could address it partly with this funds. You can address it in, you know, next year's budget cycle as part of the CIP review. You can address it as a future bond initiative, if you wanted to. But we went through the process to get you the accurate quotes for today. We know those numbers change as time goes by. But, so again, I also, also added, again, provided you with the information on the motor vehicle barriers. Again, given all the events we do, the police have requested to purchase these barriers. They can stop a semi-truck, believe it or not. And they're a lot more deployable than the, than the large blocks we've been using. And they'll allow us to do some spot closures when we need to and protect the public. It's $135,000 total price, and they'll be able to use, $137,000. But they'll be able to use asset forfeiture for a big piece of that, so we're only asking for a portion of that here. And that basically covers it. Happy to answer any questions. My understanding is you review all this, and we'll put something on the next agenda for vote.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Council questions or comments on the Capital Reserve Projects, the old ARPA funds? We have about 1.2. Counselor Zambrell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, unless I think of something else while I'm speaking. So we have the updated total, or updated for each building with the security upgrades. Do you have the total on hand?
It is, it's on here.
It is locked in here?
Well, no, for the total of all of those that I just gave you.
I have the one online.
It was, it was 418,000 for the, for the, for the three buildings. This building, which includes the library, all exterior doors and cameras, the community center, all exterior doors and cameras, and then the police upgrade, is about 418,000.
I have 413. That's on this sheet, right?
Yeah, this is now based on the updated.
Based upon the new ones.
Different coloring.
Okay.
I think this one.
Yeah.
No. The new one. It was at your place, because I just got it this afternoon.
Yeah. I was just asking for the total, what's in here, yeah.
We just got that one. Okay.
So community center, town hall, and library, police upgrades. Okay, thank you.
All set, Counselor Zambrell?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Carbone?
Thank you. So yes, Town Manager, I have a couple of questions about, one about the Pittkin Community Center. We always are constantly going for grants and trying to get the whole project done. That 3.5, that's the whole project, correct?
That is just the banquet room.
Just the banquet?
Yes.
3.5, all right. And then, so my next question would be, if we start to, all right, maybe we scale that back, and we do the best we can to make it with some available funds? If, and can we be sure? I mean, have you talked to anybody about what if we do put a couple of million into this banquet room, and then we do a renovation, and it doesn't kind of match or fit what's happening?
I'm going to ask Vlada to come up and just give a quick overview, because she's been the most involved with this. And she can speak to the potential for the community investment fund grants that we can go after now that we've done this work.
Same thing with all the security and stuff we want to do there. I think the fear is that we're going to spend all this money to do something, and then, oh, we're going to get this thing, and it's a waste, because we had to, but again, we have to do something, so.
Yep. Well, just to clarify the project, it's, it's not just for the interior of the banquet room, it's the HVAC system and the.
For the whole building or just the banquet room?
Nope, for the banquet room. So the costs for just the MEPs, so I don't think you received this as part of the agenda, but I believe it was sent out on Friday, the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 option.
It's printed at the location, too.
It's printed at your desks as well. So if you look at the Phase 1 option, that's just the MEP costs. So that's looking at the HVAC system, the duct work, putting sprinklers in, it is our emergency shelter. Also, taking the ceiling down, because you have to take the ceiling down to do the duct work. So while you're doing that, to replace the lighting and the ceiling as well. So that's that cost.
That's 2.8? That's Phase One?
So, 2.8 are the construction costs. You also, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is the 2.8. That, this sheet does not include the roof replacement. That's a separate sheet. That estimate is $225,000 that we received last fall. We're talking about potentially doing this project in spring of 2027 in March. So, we do need to put escalations on that roof as well. These escalations are already there. So, potentially around $250,000, $260,000 to do the roof restoration and then this 2.8 for those MEP costs. This is not the 750,000 if we were to phase it out, is the cost to do the rest of the interior of the space. So, doing audio upgrades, doing flooring, walls, everything else. There also is about, I believe, $186,000 for new furniture. We could remove the furniture. That's something that's easily removable. Everything else, if we're doing that Phase Two, is pretty much included. And these two sheets, that Page One is, are the construction costs. The Page Two is our soft costs, which are also necessary. But, and then the totals are right up at the bottom and the total cost if it is phased. If it's not phased, if we're able to do this project together, that's the sheet you received initially. That's the 240, the, I'm sorry, the 3.452 plus the $260, excuse me, for the roof. So, that's 3.7 million to do everything we talked about in one swoop. If it's phased, then it's doing the MEP piece, the HVAC, in March to June of '27, doing the rest of the interior in March to June, roughly, of '28.
So, where are we in the grant process?
Yep. So, in the grant process. Just wanted to clarify that because there's a lot of pieces here. There's a lot of paperwork. So, in the grant process, we had submitted at the end of June to the CIF program. We had submitted for an addition for the community center, about 10,000 square feet. That addition would allow us to rearrange staff, to put departments in there, to potentially expand our food bank, to do a lot of things to add space. So, that request, we should know if we received probably this fall around October. So, the timeline of how that would work is if we find out, yes, you received this grant funding, it's probably going to take about four months to contract. So, we're in October. That puts us into about spring of '26.
Would there be a matching grant to that? I don't mean to interrupt you because I'm thinking as you're going, click, click, clicking as you-
So, the grant that we had put in for is planning. It was just for planning. The cost was $250,000 that we would receive. The total cost of the project, I believe, was about $360,000 or $390,000. So, we would match about $130,000, which the town council did allocate $200,000 for matching funds this past year for, through the budget process for the Capital and Strategic Initiatives Department. So, we are, we already have funding that we could potentially use for that. The process of developing the plans would probably take, I don't know, eight to 12 months, somewhere like that. We'd also have to bid. So, you know, we're really around a year from the time that we contract to the time that we have plans ready and then we would go apply for funding. At that point, we could potentially include this project in there as well. So, we could ask for implementation for the addition and for the banquet room. But if you're doing, you know, the timeline, that's probably a year and a half out from now. There's going to be a lead time for the HVAC system when, for the project that we're doing at Silas Dean Middle. The lead time for that HVAC system was anywhere between 24 to 40 weeks. So, that puts us potentially into 2028 already. So, we're already talking about another escalation on top of this for another year. So, that's, that's kind of how these projects go. That, you know, the MEP costs are expensive and they're just going up exponentially every year. It's kind of crazy. I think Rachel has the numbers for what the CIP request was four years ago and it was around $350,000 for the HVAC system at Pickin. It's closer to $700,000 now excluding sprinklers, ceiling, anything like that. So, it's, these are the numbers we're seeing right now. It's pretty astounding to us, too.
Vlada, thank you very much for that. I appreciate all your-
Definitely. Any other questions on this one while we're up here?
No.
Thank you, Councilor Carbone. Further counsel com-
I'm like, I wish I was done. I'm not done yet.
I was just here to, if there's other questions.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you were, perfect. Okay. Other counsel questions or comments? Carbone, you still, Councilor Carbone, you still have the floor?
So, you said that, that the police can take some of the funds for this barrier system out of their-
Asset forfeiture.
Yes.
Yeah. About, they can do about $100,000 they have available. So, we, they're asking for the additional 37.
37?
Yeah.
And, because we have so many events in town and obviously, public safety is one of the biggest things, you know, for us. And, you know, we use dump trucks and barriers and stuff. But is anybody prepared to maybe vote on this tonight? Because I, I don't know. For me, it's kind of a no-brainer that if they're putting almost three-quarters of the money in, that it's something we need for public safety.
Excuse me. We could potentially vote on it tonight. The plan was to get a review. We haven't met for a month and then potentially vote on the whole package in August.
This has come up a lot, though. This has been in front of us quite a bit.
When we all had one more time to review it and maybe do the whole thing. But I'm open to counsel ideas or suggestions if you want to move a piece of this. But the general plan, Councilor Carbone, was to review it tonight and then discuss and then vote on the whole package in August.
So, we can't just vote on individual items?
We can't. I mean, we, we're the council. We certainly can. Welcome any further discussion on this. And then I have some general comments, but we can do that.
Thoughts? Anyone? I'm asking.
Counselor Carbone?
Clancy?
Counsel Clancy.
Yeah.
Collegees, Counselor Clancy.
He's going to have nightmares.
Yeah, it's one of the things that I was in favor of. And I frankly thought we had already done it. I was so in favor of it.
It's come up a lot.
Well, yeah. So, I'm in favor of it. I don't know if everybody else wants to discuss it. That's fine, too. I don't know that we, there's any hurry about doing it in the next month.
Thank you, Counselor Clancy. Is there any urgency to that particular item?
I mean, the next big event is Porch Fest. I don't think we could get it in time for that anyway if we tried. So, then after that, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, we want to have it for holidays.
In December. Okay. Given that, then I think we'll plan to vote on the whole package, but recognize your good point, Counselor Carbone. So, we'll take it up in August and vote on it as a package. Counselor-
Yeah, just a question for the Town Manager. How much, how much is left in the asset forfeiture fund?
I don't, I don't have the number exactly in front of me.
So, that may not represent the entire amount that they have?
No. I really have no idea what's left.
I'd like to know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And just some comments in general about the old ARPA funds and then specifically to the community center. So, this is money we still have to allocate and we would like to allocate it. It's money that was given to us by the federal government. And so, we welcome any ideas. This was the Town Manager's list. We plan to vote on it in August. It's been out there for several months. And in regards to Pickin and the senior center, community center, there were some priorities there, which was, and the council supported these priorities. We had, the seniors asked for two programming specialists to help with programming, part-time. We funded that. The other big ask in terms of more immediate, I'll call it short-term, was the entryway. So, those of you that have been there in the last month or two, the entryway has been updated, upgraded, given a facelift, if you will, with new flooring and new paint. And these are some of the short-term things that we've accomplished that is a really good start and improves the look and the people going in in terms of how they feel about the building. The long-term stuff is part of the work, Vlada, and we appreciate the great work you're doing. It's very expensive and we have to look at the best ways. If we're going to do a full upgrade of the community center, what is the best way to finance that? How do we do that? And that's more of a long-term project that we're looking at. But we have made some good short-term improvements. So, with that, does anybody have any more questions or comments on item L1, which again, is the old ARPA funds now in the capital reserve account? If not, I'm going to move on. Okay. So, we have no business, new business. We have no ordinance or resolutions for instructions. We are now at item O, which is our second public comment. After that, we have council comments and tonight, we do have councilors and executive session item. So, I now open up the second public comment session. I see Mr. Woodward. Bob, your hand was up first.
Thank you.
Again, we do for the record, name and address, Bob. For the, thank you.
Bob Woodward, 456 Middletown Avenue in Weathersfield. I'll go back to signs for a minute. My neighbor across the street suggested this morning, why not an article in the rear reminder? There's enough stuff about Weathersfield in the rear reminder, an article about signs and maybe sidewalks and that there is some kind of assistance would be useful in the rear reminder. The other thing I want to go back to, and I've addressed this before here, and is to the ambulance situation. I listened to most of the hearings, not all of them, but most of them. I read the articles that Mr. Presley had online. I forgot to say that the last time I spoke here. Won his own reaction, won the report from the Department of Public Health. My observations from all the hearings I listened to are the lawyers won. They got paid. The two factors that I saw that were missing in this aren't legal issues. They're facets that need to happen if people are going to work together. Communication and a sense of being a team. Finally, sometime late last month or early this month, I called the legal department at Department of Public Health and said that to them. And a woman answered and I don't know whether she was interested in what I had to say or not. I wish, it was hard to tell. Week or two later, I called the commissioner's office at the Department of Public Health, got her administrative assistant, had a very nice conversation. She at least listened to me. Twenty-something years ago, I earned a certificate in conflict resolution. If I can be of any help, to get the ambulance in the town talking and working together as a team, I promise you, number one, I will not charge what a lawyer charges. And number, I may, I may ask for ice cream, but I won't charge that much. But I'm serious. This is important. Communication breaks down, a sense of being a team break down, and everyone gets hurt. And that, I think, is where we're at. And if I can be of any help, you have my number. Please call me.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that offer. Further public comments? Anybody else from the public? Mr. Young? Hey, I got you next. Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. First of all, we've had a discussion. Well, first, I, I support the idea of changing the referendum date from September 16th to the normal election date that I believe is November 6th. I hope that you would consider changing it to the regular election date. Second, your website still doesn't have closed caption on it. And that's not good. That's not good because then it forced me to make an FOI for information that I wanted, which is more costly and more time-consuming for everybody. When I can go online and look at the, look at the history of minutes without contacting Ms. Schroeder or, it's so much easier and it's less, and it's more effective and it's correct. When I do my research, it's correct. Unfortunately, the follow-up happened right here at this podium on one of my responses. Next, signs on street, on, on the, the snow shelf. Go right down here to the Silas Dean Highway, Maple Street. The sign that says Maple Street and Silas Dean Highway, it has three or four signs attached to it. Attached to it, which is all on the snow shelf. And you see signs all over. And that, and our people should be picking them up and throwing them away or putting them on the side and calling these people to come and pick them up and, and tell them they need, need to be more careful where they're putting their signs. Also, Kathy Bagley is putting out signs. Is she putting them on, on the, on the snow shelf? We don't know. Now, you also have speed cameras that you talk about and how you need to change people's driving habits. What do we need to do to change our spending habits? Does anybody know? I mean, if you're out there beating up the drivers on the highway to change their driving habits, what can we do to change our spending and our business habits here at the town of Weathersfield? Right now, everything we look at that I sat out here tonight and listened to is so damn expensive. And that's because we do the bid system. And there's so much collusion that goes on within the bid system. Negotiation is really the way to work on bringing prices down and not, and that management doesn't hamper your negotiator. That's very important because in so many cases, management directs what the negotiator is going to do. But in real business, negotiators go for the low price and the best deal for them. Government doesn't do that at all. They don't come even close. So, I, I think these are a few things that I just wanted to mention from my observations. Now, also tonight, it looks like you voted on, maybe you didn't, you voted on from 3 to 12, at least it was one vote for something. And I don't understand what that is. But in there, I noticed that you have number four on your agenda, where it talks about the Kenny Memorial Center, where you're going to spend $138,000 to put in a new elevator. As I spoke in other meetings up here, those people at the Historic Society were the best business dealers you could ever find when they came up against the town of Weathersfield, which had the worst people representing the taxpayer. And that's exact, and it's on a 50-year lease that we are now going to, that we're paying forever and ever. Because when it comes for renewal 50 years from now, it'll be same deal, same deal. A lousy town and our people who represented us at that time were awful. Our council members who voted for it, our volunteers who were negotiating with the Weathersfield Historic Society, all of you got a copy of that lease. There isn't anything in there that protects the citizen. $100 a year? That's all we got? And they're making $50-some thousand dollars a year just on renting rooms out. We couldn't do that because we don't have good business people.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
We have some of the worst people in the world working for us.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
They certainly are, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
You be good and I'll talk again the next time.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further counsel, excuse me, public comment. Yes, Taya, you had your hand up.
Taya Tola, 59 Stonegate Drive. The only thing I'm just going to say before we end tonight is I know it's far late into the hearings and the decision from the DPH, but Mr. Presley, if you are willing, I know myself and plenty of young EMTs from both Aetna, both WEMSA would be more than willing to talk to you. We can figure out a solution. I know it's, being on the road is a whole different experience than being in an office and I don't want to doubt anyone's job here. You guys have a very difficult job that you guys do, hearing so many people, you know, and their complaints or their concerns for the town. And I don't even know, my hairs would go gray if I had to do what you guys did. Hence why I'm on the road. But be on the road, having to handle patients and having to take care of them is mentally, physically, and emotionally exhausting. It can be a lot. And I know we're not an ALS service, although we do have our serdists and we, honestly, we should have medics. I think we should have a lot more resources than we do right now and things, you know, should have been more accelerated to where we have our own medics compared to getting an ERM and out servicing and a bunch of other things and having a better med control being at Hartford because most of our patients go to Hartford. So, a lot of these things, I am in agreement with in an extent of what's best for our patients and what will bring us more resources. But we could work together on it. We could really acknowledge, you know, what we go through and how we can make it better. There's some times where patients can really sense when things are not going well or patients aren't getting along or with our staff or when they notice the tension between, you know, our company versus Aetna. And patient outcomes can really be dependent on that. I work, I've used- I work, I used to work at Hartford Hospital, and I would see when medical staff don't get along with each other, you can feel the tension, the patient doesn't feel safe, they don't feel comfortable. The people of Weathersfield know what's going on, and, you know, when they see two of us show up at the house, they're like, and they see, you know, maybe a medic from Aetna doesn't like working with us because of everything going on, you know, they can feel the tension. It's like, am I safe here? Like, you know, are both of these people that are in the back of the truck with me going to agree with each other, you know? So I think there's a lot of tension going on. I can see why it is. I'm young, I don't know what really, I wasn't here essentially when some of the poor decisions that WEMSA made and some of the poor decisions that were made by the town were here, but I offer a open door. I offer a slate to start over and really work on it so that we can be a reliable source to our people and be safe for the public. I know Jane Rhodes, last time I was here, you had mentioned, you know, there's always going to be something that's here, which is death and taxes, and yeah, those things are going to exist. We can't fight our fate. We can't fight paying money as much as it sucks. Sometimes we have to pay a lot of money for good things to happen. We're all going to die, but I think to say that in terms of, yeah, people are going to die, we should work as hard as we can to give people an opportunity to live and tell her, tell those families, you know, we did absolutely every single thing we could to keep your family member alive and well, you know, every measure that we can take because otherwise those families are going to sue, they're going to file lawsuits, they're going to be heartbroken. And, you know, if they know that we tried our best, it's much easier for them to accept it, for sure. So that's all I'm going to say for tonight. I'm going to leave an open door if like, you know, if there's any opportunity to really reinstate things better, I'm here for that. I know Dennis is more than happy to do that. I know there's a plenty of people at WEMSA that are willing to do that as well. We could work a solution, and I would love to have medics in our own town that we can, you know, service so that we don't have to rely on other sources, but hopefully we can get something working together. I would be more than happy to do that. So thank you for, for your time tonight.
Thank you, Taya. Thank you, appreciate it. Further, public comment? Anyone else tonight from the public before we wrap up? I'm not seeing any, and so I'm going to take a, well, we have now, we have council comments now. So before we go into executive session, does any councillor have any comments? And we generally reserve this time to respond to anything that's outstanding from the public. Anyone? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm not adjourned.
Not adjourned.
Moving to executive session.
Motion to, yes.
But I'm on what? You want to do it?
So moved.
Oh, Lord, just do it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passes. Thank you, Dick. Dick, just two minutes.
Here to be different.